Let me start the meeting at six thirty. First order of business is public comments. If you would like to make a public comment, address the board and not the audience, come to the podium, state your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes or less. I want to make one comment. Just in terms of something that's happened in terms of this week, in terms of some comments that were made by one of the members of the select board. The opinions of Mr. Kerry Brown are not the opinions of the least select board. Going forward, the select board will advise him that should he again post a post on any social media platform, he should take steps to explicitly state that they are his own opinions and not those of the select board. So with that said, if anyone would like to come to the podium?
Good evening. My name is Paul Goodman, seventy-four, New Town Plains Road, Cleveland. My comments are pretty quick, and they are in regards to what Kerry had posted, and so I'll just make it quick. This round of recent comments are summarily inappropriate and unacceptable from an elected official period. There's no excuse for suggesting armed action is necessary for dissuading a religious group from participating in politics. That view is counter to the Constitution of the United States and is conduct on becoming an official of our town. Terrorism aims to disenfranchise the public violence and intimidation, suggesting that a given religious group, any religious group, of which some of our town residents are members, participating in government bears watching that we should lock and load is a lesser version of that disenfranchisement. Mr. Brown's remarks are xenophobic at the very best, and not at all representative of the welcoming nature of this town generally put forward. I think it's in the best interest of the town that Mr. Brown recant and resign. If he does not realize the impact his words and actions have on the people he was elected to represent, then the board should censure him officially and accordingly. Finally, if no action is taken, then I call upon the residents of Cleveland to refuse to vote for bigotry, dispremonition, define another, come elections more aligned to values we want to uphold. And that's my comment.
Good evening. I'd also like to take the opportunity to speak publicly about Mr. Brown's comments, which I also find to be repugnant and inappropriate. I think for context, it's important that everyone should know exactly what was said. This is the exact quote from the Post. It says, quote, "Nothing like waking up in the morning to read that the FBI found an Islamic jihadist training camp tucked away in the hills of Alabama. Stay away, people. They are out there. Some of them hold office in our government. Scary. Lock and load." To which then I posted a comment on the Post saying, quoting his reference to some of them hold office in our government, asking him for proof for a citation of this claim, and that I expected better from an elected official in our town. Mr. Brown's response to my comment was, "I will start with Alana Omar, who my firmly believe is anti-American. The number of Muslims either holding office or running for office is also growing. I'm not saying all Muslims are terrorists, but I am saying it bears blocking. Please Google Muslims in U.S. government. Sorry if I disappoint you." I think as was said earlier, Mr. Brown's comments are inappropriate for an elected official. He was elected to represent and serve the best interests of all the citizens of this town, and his comments are racist and Islamic-phobic, and they make clear that he is unable to represent each of the citizens equally here. Not only does that post have the potential to incite violence against our neighbors, it has the potential to suppress or keep certain members of our town from ever getting involved or running for an elected office, simply because of their religion. This cannot stand. Mr. Brown's opinions can remain his own, racist as they are, and unlikely to change, given the fact that he has yet to publicly apologize for them or recant them. Possibly this is a pattern emerging, demonstrative of some agenda on Mr. Brown's part to sow discord in this town. He had another comment the other day about the tax bills, which I'm not sure what the purpose of that was, other than to just turn neighbor against neighbor. This town has very important business coming up, and I know Dr. Morse is here tonight to talk about the middle school. These are important issues that affect not only the members of our town, but the members of the West River community as a whole. And if Mr. Brown cannot equally represent all the citizens of this community, then he is not fit to serve on this board. Thank you.
Could you state your name and address?
Yes, I'm sorry. James Lahon, fifty-eight Fox Garrison Road.
Thank you. Anybody else? Last call? Number three, discussion of elected electronic media postings. Is that the same? Oh, okay. Anybody have any comments? Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead. Come on up.
Where is Mr. Brown today?
You want to come to the podium and state your name and address, please? Thank you. All right.
Jessica Abrams, two-twenty-one Lee Hook Road in Lee. I just wondered, was he asked not to come today? Or I think some of us would have liked to hear why he said the things he said.
It's my understanding he'll probably be at the next meeting, so if you'd like to come back for that particular one.
Can I just, completely unrelated to this matter, he had previously informed us that he was not going to be here tonight. So the fact that he's not here tonight is unrelated to this matter. Thank you.
Thanks. Anything else for number three? Nope. Number four, cemetery fees, public hearing. So I officially open the public hearing?
Good evening. I'm Steve Hoy. I'm the chairman of the trustees of the cemeteries. We've had to, as you have in front of you, a fee schedule that we've gone up. We've had to go up on our fees, kind of considerable when it comes to full burials, because we've had to find a new digger for the graves. We found a gentleman here in town that is doing it, and he's done one already. Did a nice job. We happen to have vaults on either side of him, and one in front of him, and he didn't touch anything.
That's good.
It was a good training, we'll call it, we say. Basically, you see in front of you, we basically had to go up almost double on everything as far as full burials. We've gone up some on the cremation charges, as well as a little on the lot charges. Do you have any questions? I'll write up and answer them.
And I'm not sure, Peter, if you can tell us, but when was the last time you raised rates?
I want to say April of 'oh-six.
Okay. So like thirteen, thirteen years.
Yep.
On the, do you have a question?
No, I see a note on here that we raised rates or something changed in June of 2013.
Okay. Well, piece of paper I had since 'oh-six, so I missed that one. Sorry.
On the second page, it says, "Cremation charges." So these are the three individuals that you're, we use on a rotating basis on?
If we can, if we can't get Matt Bryant here in town, we will get the other two. We have a certificate of insurance from Matt for work in the town, so that's why we're using them. The other two have it, they claim, and they will provide it when we call them.
And refresh my memory, these charges are just passed on to the?
To the family as, you know, we take the grave.
Okay. Any questions?
I have no questions.
Does anyone have any questions?
Just for the purposes of the public hearing, we might want to state what the proposed rates are.
Okay. Effective, well?
That's what April first, just because it was a date.
Okay. Single grave costs at four hundred dollars, a three-foot, four-inch by ten-foot with perpetual care, effective April first, 2019, per authorization of the cemetery trustees as selectmen. Opening charge is full burial, weekdays, eight hundred dollars after three P.M. Use Saturday charge. Saturday charge is eight hundred and fifty dollars, so there's an extra fifty-dollar charge. Sundays are a thousand. Opening burial charge is cremation burials, weekdays, two hundred, weekends, three hundred, includes after three P.M., weekdays, Saturdays and Sundays, and a fifty-dollar additional charge for standard-sized cremation vault. Okay. Any questions? Anything else anybody will not say?
Don't comment.
No comment? All right. Do I close the hearing first or make a motion?
Yeah, we can close.
All right. Officially close the hearing. I move to approve the proposed new cemetery fees as presented. About a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
No discussion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
While I'm up here, can I introduce the new cemetery trustee that has joined us? We lost our chairman. A few weeks ago, I became the new chairman, and Jeff Lepardo, your deputy chief here in town, has become the new, one of the new trustees. Donna Eisenhardt's been with us now for a number of years, and she's now back again. So the board is full and ready to go.
Will you have us sexton soon, or?
We're going to try without it.
You're going to, so one of you will fulfill that job?
Yes. Between myself and Steve at the Highway, we seem to be able to fill that quite well.
Excellent. Thank you.
The board actually needs to approve the appointment to the cemetery board?
Yeah, that's later on.
Okay. Yeah. No, actually, I don't know where that went.
Isn't it?
Oh, that's actually, yeah.
Isn't it because of the?
We just rolled right into it.
Yes, we did. Approve it, we don't have to do it down further. Oh, yeah, there it is.
All right. So number five, we'll just deal with later on. Number five.
No.
You want to deal with it now?
You just mentioned it. Did you meet Jeff? Did you meet Jeff now?
No.
Oh, you didn't?
Do you know Jeff?
No.
Okay.
Jeff.
David, address?
This is John McCourts.
Why do you want to be a cemetery trustee?
Why not?
Okay, good. Don't raise your hand.
I'm Jeff Lepardo. I live at twenty-one Kelsey Road in Lee.
Well, good to meet you.
Thank you.
I met you before.
Yeah, we've met a few times, the, you know, socialism and stuff like that.
ABC Two, I think you were at one of those, I think.
Right.
With the chief.
Yep. Correct. Thank you.
Okay.
We'll sign your appointment. Does he have? He doesn't have? Let's just do it now. Let's be done with it. Just be done with it.
Just step to the floor.
Great. Let's see when to move on.
Yes. Just go to Linda, guess where it is.
Schwenson.
Schwenson.
Yes, one.
Thanks.
Thanks. Official.
Welcome aboard.
All right. Number six, Dr. Morse.
Yep.
Oh, pull it.
Needs to take, make a motion to approve his report under number five on the agenda.
Can we do it under number ten?
Sure. If it's not even considered under this.
No, it's, it's all nine, it's all five.
All right. I move to approve one of Jeffrey Lepardo to the Board of Cemetery Trustees to serve until March 2021. About a second. Any discussion?
No discussion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, that was. All right. Dr. Morse.
Now.
I'm just being honest tonight.
I was going to say something, but I didn't want to say that.
The chief has agreed to be my right-hand man tonight. Thank you very much, Peter. And thank you, the selectmen, once again, for giving me the opportunity to speak with you. And also thank you to the taxpayers of Lee, Madbury, and Durham, who allowed our budget as of July first to have an amount of eight hundred thousand dollars for the previous construction work on the new middle school, on the proposed new middle school. So the first picture the chief is holding up is a, what I would describe as a very classy back-of-the-napkin drawing. In other words, it's not a true representation of what the school will be, but the concepts are right. You probably know that the current school was opened in 1936, and it's been added on to about four times. And at the current, the current facility, it would really be cost prohibitive to add on to it again or renovate it. We're at the point of really new construction. About, about half the classrooms are substandard. If you've had children or grandchildren in the, in the current middle school, you probably have seen fifth-grade classrooms that are about sixty percent the size of some of the other classrooms. Our music program happens in the cafeteria, the hallways, it happens in closets, just about any free space that we can find. ADA compliance is, meets code in the sense that if we don't touch the building, it's meeting the code that was in place about twenty years ago. However, if we touch the building to renovate, we have to bring the whole building up to code, which would be billions of dollars. So over the course of the last four years, and Scott's been part of this, we've been talking about the need to replace the current school. And so there are really just four principles that we're working under. The first one is obvious. Let's make this school academically appropriate, make the class sizes consistent, make them meet the needs of our students. The second one is probably equally as obvious to Lee, Madbury, and Durham, and that's make the school sustainable. Currently, the, the current school is, you know, probably not the most energy-efficient building on the planet, though it does well for its age. The new building, we're looking at a net-zero goal, where the energy used is incredibly efficient. We're using all kinds of sustainability standards in our concepts, including geothermal heating, solar hot water, those types of tools, an incredibly energy-efficient envelope. A four-story building, and the logic between four, behind a four-story building is twofold. One, heat rises, so if you're heating something, it goes up. The second reason is it makes for a smaller footprint. And so with that, chief, let's pull up the second piece. And just for those who know the location, this grayed-out area that looks like the letter, capital letter L, is the current school. The current school is about three football fields' worth of roof. And what they've done over the years is they stretched it, and they stretched it, and they stretched it, as far as it really could be stretched. The new school will be a much more compact building because it's going up. The total roof, for, as an example, will be about one football field and a half, so you're cutting down that surface dramatically. And then just, the new school will be where the current athletic field is, and the athletic field will be where the current school is. So you can see, over time, we've really developed a pretty interesting concept in terms of energy efficiency and academics. We're also looking, and this will, something the chief would be happy to hear, if he was in Durham as opposed to Lee, the traffic pattern around that school is a nightmare. So the third pillar is safety. So what happens currently is this is a parking area. Our kids go out to recess, they're crossing a parking area where traffic is coming in, and buses are moving, cars, parents are moving. This is a safety nightmare. By putting the school as far toward the wetlands as possible, we eliminate the possibility of kids crossing or potentially getting harmed. The traffic pattern piece is if, how many people have, have kids in a middle school and pick them up at the end of the day? So all you have to say is, "Yeah," and parents go, "Yep," I know what he's going to say next, which is, "This traffic pattern in Durham is a nightmare." And it also creates a safety issue, because this whole road will be backed all the way up to the, to the Madbury Road, or onto the Baghdad Road, and you'd have parents dropping kids off that whole length, and kids getting picked up that whole length, another potential safety hazard. So the traffic pattern is being analyzed. And then with a, a school that's built on sustainability, wellness, air circulation, those kinds of issues are also preemptive. So, chief, the next one. So this slide addresses how we hope to attack the traffic pattern and the safety issue. So I talked about the flipping of the field in the school, so there's the school footprint, there's the field. Right now, they're opposite. What we're hoping to do, and I would tell you, the town of Durham's been very cooperative, is right now Garrison is a one-way road. We're asking them to consider making it two ways. So pattern, parents would come in on Garrison, take a left on Denison, and then go into a dedicated parent loop. So that means the buses and the parents never cross track. So we'll be bringing the buses in off Denison. The other advantage is, there's no road between the parent drop-off and the bus. That means the kids are always in a safe place. They never have to worry about traffic. Thank you, chief. So that was a pretty important part of the concept, and I know you're busy, so I'm kind of running through this, but I'll definitely answer your questions. This is the concept for the first and second floor. Part of it, and they should, would you mind giving the select board each of those cards that I gave you guys? Thank you very much. So the first floor is your administrative suite, of course, coming in, your counseling, music program to the right, phys ed to the left, and then you walk to the end of the building, and that's where your library is. The really cool thing about the library is this is a glass wall. When this is not being used to serve, so the kids get their food, and they come out into the main lobby, we're not creating a cafeteria. The kids will be able to eat in this giant space, and instead of having four lunches, we'll have two, which means there's more time for academics and, and play, instead of just scheduling around lunchtime. So the kids will come out here and eat two periods a day. When it's not there, it becomes an extension of the library, which is a super cool idea. So we're looking at all the spaces in the building being learning spaces. When you go to the second floor, the, the music hall, recital hall, is two stories high, just like the gym. You end up with the balcony of the music room. You end up with the world language program, the art program, and the STEM program. Now, some of you have seen the absolute explosion of kids taking music in the district. And if any of you went to the Strings Concert a week and a half ago, or the middle school orchestra concert, the Strings Concert had to be held in the high school gymnasium. Could not fit in the high school auditorium. The orchestra program, you had standing room only. So we're at the, we're at a place and time where, when students are doing performances, and parents and grandparents and loved ones show up to go to these concerts, there's literally no space for them to be in. So we've created a music venue in the new middle school, a opposing one. And then the next one, chief? Thank you. This is the third and fourth floor of the new middle school. So essentially, what you have is a science lab to a classroom. Four classrooms make a team. Four classrooms make a team. You have four classrooms, four teams per floor. That allows maximum flexibility for students, so for most of the day, your students are going to be on the third and fourth floor, but go to the second floor for world language, art, and STEM, but go to the first floor for music, phys ed, and lunch. So that adds the element of safety. Most of your kids, most of the day, are nowhere near the entry or first-floor level. It also creates equity in the classrooms, so there's no longer classrooms that are sixty percent the size of a regular classroom. It also creates an environment where we can meet all of the students' needs, whether they're phys ed, art, music, or regular classroom needs. The school is being designed to meet them. And then this is just, you know, a pretty exciting shot, I think, again, a graphic drawing, more or less, of that fancy back-of-the-napkin thing, to give the community a sense of how this music room would work. Now, recent conversations, we've eliminated this window wall, but one of the things that's really, really super exciting about this, this room, is that the music teachers did not want a stage on which the kids would perform, like at the high school. The floor becomes the performing space. And so if you were able to go to the Strings Concert a couple of weeks ago, that's what they did in the gym. They used the gym floor to spread the kids out. Sound was, was okay, but in a room like this, it would be amazing. And the idea that it's, we're going to surround the kids, instead of the kids being in front of you, the audience on left, right, and, and in front of the kids. So, thank you, chief. So I know that you guys are really busy, and I'm talking really fast, and I'm trying to be respectful of your time. We've done a number of presentations. The first one was in Lee at Masway, and it was incredibly well-attended. So happy with the attendance. We've done one in Madbury. We're going to be doing one in Durham. Scott was on the concept committees over the last couple of years. We're bringing everybody who's ever been on a committee in the district, whether it was for late start, or all-day kindergarten, or working on the middle school, whatever, whatever activity they, they participated in, we're bringing them all into a room, and when we're providing them supper, and we're going to be talking about how we can get the word out that this, this school is so necessary for the district. And so I think that would be my Scott point. Scott, answering your, I was at John's questions of the communities.
Could you speak a little bit? One of the things that I think that design achieves it, but the ability to lock out the upper floors when you're having public events?
So, let me see if I can show that.
Yeah.
I can show it here. So these stairwells, there's four of them, go all the way down to the ground floor. And what actually happens is, these teams have a dedicated stairwell. So if we're in an emergency situation, again, I think the chief would appreciate this, we can lock every one of these stairwells down, as well as the elevator, and have the kids on those upper floors. It's, it's a really good concept in terms of efficiency for kids, because they are not looking for the stairwell at the other end of the building. This building also has two elevators, and that's deliberate. We're doing that because of our handicapped kids. We have some incredibly handicapped kids physically, and just the walk, the length of this building, would be an enormous task to ask for them. So we can lock down those elevators, we can lock down these stairwells, push the kids up instead of out, and they'll be less vulnerable to whatever person is out there that we may not want in the building.
But for the first floor, like, not, not a lockdown situation, but you're having an event?
Yes.
You can lock out the rest of the building, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So this whole floor would be open if we have, if we have a music piece going on, or there's a game in, in the gym. This space is all open. So we can, if we need to, we can lock down the library, we can lock down the kitchen, but this would become really kind of public access space. We're also, and just in terms of safety, moving everybody through the front entrance, so you can't come in from the side. Those doors are exit-only. Everybody's expected to come in through the front. We have a holding area, find out where they want to be, that they have an appointment, that kind of thing, and then we will release them into the building. So this, this floor can be secured unto itself. We're kind of hoping that we'll get community participation in the building, you know, people will want to use it.
Any questions?
I have a question with respect to parking. So let's say you do have an event. Parking in Durham is becoming problematic. I know this is off to the side, but...
No, no, it's, it's real. We could not put the number of parking spaces we need on either the high school or the middle school property. The design for this school, we actually doubled the parking, but I can guarantee you that the minute there's an event, it's going to be the same way it always is, where we line co-drive, and, you know, people are parking in every parking space that's available, and then some. So it's very possible, like at the high school, when we have an event there, people park sometimes as far away as the middle school and walk down, as far as my, my, my office, and they walk down. I'm on the side of the road, and they walk down. The same thing is likely to happen in the middle school, because just isn't enough real estate to build the parking that we would need for the times that, for example, we put on a Strings Concert, or an orchestra concert, or a musical, like this, this weekend, by the way, is musical.
The second question. Four floors. Let's have some known reason you had to expand. Have you built an expansion here?
Yeah. Yeah. The way this is designed, and we don't anticipate having to expand, because the enrollment projections keep us at around twenty-one hundred kids for the next five years, but you know, enrollment is, goes up and down, and right now, for example, in Masway, the enrollment is way up. It's three hundred and sixty kids, but five years ago, it was two hundred and eighty. So it does happen. This part of the building, where you see these blank spots, that, that could be four stories' worth of additional classrooms. So that's where it's built in. The, the... because the enrollment projections keep us at around 2,100 kids for the next five years. But, you know, enrollment is, goes up and down. And right now, for example, in Masway, the enrollment is way up. It's 360 kids, but five years ago, it was 280. So it does happen. This part of the building, where you see these blank spots, that, that could be four stories worth of additional classrooms. So that's where it's built in. The, the site itself, as you can see, doesn't allow for expansion. So that's, that section of the building was deliberately designed so we could get, I think, eight more classrooms than we needed to.
I'm glad to hear that because I made one, my harem, well, was put in. They had the four pods, they were going to add, had to add them almost immediately.
Exactly. And the design of that building, so that's, that was a lesson learned, John. The design of the O'Haremit Building, though very cute and very clever, is a nightmare when we have to add onto it. Whereas the Masway School, we added onto it, was a simple approach. And it's, it's because of the angles at Masway. They did this, you know, kind of funky, kind of peace sign kind of shape to the building. Whereas Masway, it's, it's really a, a box. So by going up, we can keep it box-like, which makes the construction much easier.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any questions from anybody for Dr. Morse?
I do have a couple of questions.
Sure. You have to come and pull you?
Sure. I can't, yes. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Wendy Sargent, 221 Mayfair Road. Just a couple of questions. One is in regards to the cafeteria style that you're doing. So two lunches. And I'm curious, how much seating have you figured out this evening? Just having had kids through the middle school and in the middle school, I know that lunches can be a stressful time for kids, finding a place to sit and a friend to sit with. How does that work out for the kids?
It is going, I mean, it's very, it's a, let me go to the microphone so I can answer your question. It's a very deliberate design. So in the current middle school, first of all, it's incredibly undersized, which is why we have four lunches in the current school. So by using this space, there are going to be nice tables, nice seating areas. It's going to be a very inviting place for the kids. And it's plenty of space for the kids to sit, plenty.
So compared to the current's, you know, is it twice the size of the current room they're eating in now?
Probably, probably three times the size because you're talking about the full length of the, of the building until you hit them, until you hit the library. So it's, it's very, very, it's going to be a very generous place to eat. And, and then when kids are done eating, a very generous place to expand is a learning commons. Because the idea is this becomes a learning commons during another time. So it should be, it should be way, way better than the current school.
And then my second question is, one of the things I always appreciated about having my children in the school, middle school, is that the fifth grade was very segregated
Yeah.
from the seventh, sixth, seventh, eighth. And how is that going to fit into this new concept for future generations?
So this is really sweet. So the, so the, I just wanted to make sure people can see. So that's a team, and that's a team. So you have all kinds of choices. You can have fifth grade here and on the fourth floor. You can have fifth grade occupy this half of the building. You can do a lot of really neat things with this building that you can't do with the current one. You haven't been a parent there, you know that the current fifth grade is at one end of the building, on the third floor. And the gym is at the other end of the building, on the first floor. So all that time traveling is wasted. This can all be segmented off, so this is purely fifth grade. It's, it's, and art can be third and fourth grade, it's purely fifth grade.
So the intention would still be to keep those fifth graders somewhat separate from the older kids that are a little advanced socially?
Exactly.
Okay. Those are my questions.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
You had a question, too?
I did. Sorry.
That's all right.
It was on your first picture. Susan McGetrick, one George Mett Road. Um, no, I guess it wasn't. It showed, it showed the athletic field and there was, there's that one. Okay. Looking at that, how, what is the distance from the road to the athletic field, where the athletic field is going to be? And is there going to be a barrier so that if people, if they're driving too fast or anything like that?
So if you're, so the parking that's on...
Dennison?
Dennison will still be there. So this is actually probably equal to the third floor of the current, of the proposed middle school. So there won't be any parking coming into the field. There's going to be a small parking space here, a, a small parking space here, and one back here. So in terms of people, in, in terms of drivers crossing paths with other drivers, yeah, because there'll be a roof for that. But in terms of them crossing paths with students, it'd be impossible.
Accidents. Somebody running off the road.
Well, if they run, they run off this road, they're going to drop, they're going to drop. This is a big berm right here.
Okay.
This is just like a grass hill.
Okay.
So if they go off that road, they're not going to go any further than the bottom of that hill because their car's going to be a wreck.
Okay.
In terms of other areas, I mean, this is a bermed area up here, so there's no way of traffic coming into the school there. There's an entry here, but it's a, it's a bus, it's the bus entry. This is higher. So probably the, if you come in, let me show you that slide I had. Probably the only place that traffic could go wacky in this design is right here. You know, if a parent came in and for whatever reason crossed there or when they were making this loop to go out, they kept on going. So we'll probably put, you know, like, what are those, Jersey barriers? What are they called?
Jersey barriers and bollocks.
Oh, thank you. There, so that, that wouldn't be possible.
Okay.
But other than that, this is, this is probably ground level right here. This is not. This is coming down that steep hill. So probably the only place where that isn't even possible is right here at this, this level.
All right. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Dr. Morse?
I have a follow-on question.
Go ahead.
A card that says, you had mentioned it after hours availability.
What do you mean?
Well, the high school right now is used every, every evening until probably 10 o'clock. We try to chase people out so the custodians can clean the building for the next school day. I'm hopeful that we'll have that same kind of traffic on, in the new middle school that will have rec programs and community programs. You know, for example, if, if the town had a guest speaker, you, you could use that music room. It's designed to be, you know, a presentation space, not just a music space. It wouldn't be a great place for a musical that has lots of costume, costume changes. It would be a great space for presentations. It would be a great space for, like, Elizabeth and Lisa Beaton Theater, where they don't do the whole craziness with props and, and changing costumes. So I think that would be a, a great space. The library will be a great space for small meetings. So I, I think that's what I'm hopeful. I'm hopeful we'll get, sort of try to take the pressure off the high school a little bit and, and share it between the two buildings.
I think it's a good idea.
The other thing that I'm kind of hopeful will be that when we have this music facility that, you know, right now, we send kids up to the high school for math and so forth. I'd love to have our, our high school music program actually happen in this space as opposed to the high school because it's designed for it. So we might see some cross-traffic between the high schools going to the middle school instead of just always going to the middle school and the high school.
Thank you. Any other questions for Dr. Morse? Can I ask one? Last question?
Sure.
Give, uh, give us in broad strokes the steps going forward?
Yeah. So, um, broad strokes going forward. By the time I ask again to speak with you, which will probably be in the October range, Julie, those concept drawings will actually be more detailed and more deliberative of what the school will actually look like. So over the course of the summer, we'll do test drawings for geothermal. We'll actually start drawing in detail the groundwork that needs to be done, the concrete work that needs to be done, so that hopefully, when the public supports the new school in March, we can start construction by end of May. So over the course of the next 10 months, we'll go from these concept designs into genuine representations of the new school. The architect right now is still working with staff. In fact, he has another meeting with staff, I think, next week and the week after, to make sure there's a proof of concept here because he doesn't want to start drawing until we know we have it downright. We have the public, we'll have a public forum, another one. And this time, it'll be probably at the current middle school. Then we have the supper where I've invited people who've worked for the district before on different issues. Over the course of the summer, more drawings. When it's the fall, again, getting out and, and talking about it as, as often as I can. I wanted to be able to participate, have a booth in the Lee, Lee Day. I want to have a booth in the Maghary Day and in the Durham Day. And if I'm not speaking about it, just having a presence so people can ask me about it. You know, but that's, that's the key. In terms of cost, which, you know, there's always an issue, of course, we project the cost of the school to be someplace in the avenue of $48 million. To give you a sense of how that fits, Durham High School was $87 million. The New Market renovation in addition is, was $39 million. So it's, for all new construction, it's, it's bearing toward the New Market cost. One of the things that the board has been working with me on is how to bring the cost of the middle school into our operating budget until we have to pay the bond. Part of the reason we're doing that is we're trying to soften the blow on the taxpayer. If I asked the taxpayer for $48 million tomorrow and, and, and the bond was due the following year, it would be an extraordinarily high impact on taxes. So what the board and I have been doing over the last two years and will continue to do over the next five years is build the cost of the bond into our operating budget by doing the additions on Masway, doing the addition on O'Haremit, those, those kind of capital projects. So when the bond is actually due, it'll have a minimal impact on, on the taxpayers. I don't believe in dumping $48 million bonds on the taxpayers overnight. Unfortunately, the school board doesn't either. And so we're working on financial plans to make sure that when the true cost of the school comes forward, it'll have less of an impact than avoid if we did it all at once. So we're trying to be very conscientious about that.
Anything else?
No.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Chief.
Uh, one last question. How much did your assistant get paid to assist you with this?
It's always in kind. He's kind, I'm kind.
Item number seven, Larry Kimber, Rec Commission Chair. Oh, and Kami. Read it. I only have to read so much, but then continue on.
Well, we've got a couple of items tonight. First thing is doggy waste stations. And I have not had a chance to, well, get some answers for that. I want to jump to outdoor smoking policy, which we're asked about and the Conservation, Rec Commission, and the Humanity Committee. There should be no smoking at all at any of the town recreation facilities nor have an area for that. Okay. Pavilion lighting. That was going pretty good until yesterday. Tried to get, oops, tried to get three quotes for that. I've got one. I had two. Pass this around. This is from Air Electric. And he and I met a couple of weeks ago to look over what was needed. And this is his proposal to put in LED lighting. And by the way, I did speak with the Energy Commission, or I got email a little on that and got response, so basically, we're on the same page with LED lighting on that. That would be to run new wires through the existing conduit from the electrical shed. The controls for lighting there would be locked up, as are the other controls. And it would provide LED strip lighting around the upper rafters for the length of the pavilion. It would also provide for two spotlights, LED spotlights at either end to illuminate a staging area for the concerts that we're having. There would also be some electrical boxes there for plug-ins. So if something could be, something needed in the future, some boxes would be there. But all, all access to controls of that would be in the electrical building. The, the total cost for that is $2,800. And I did get another quote from Howie Hoff. And his was much more reasonable because he was going to donate most of everything. But yesterday, Howie informed me that he has to have rotator cuff surgery. So he will not be able to do it. So if you wish, I can try to locate some other electricians, but I thought that David's proposal was pretty good. As far as funding that goes, I did check in our budget. We have currently $4,800 left in our budget for the year. We do have some expenses coming out of that, such as electric and so on, which, between now and July 1st, which it would be plenty in there if we were to take the $2,800 out of there to pay for the electrical. One thing I would like to mention about our budget, and I just realized that tonight when I was looking at the pages that Joanne sent me, the fair committee is under our budget for some reason. And it's a line item in our budget.
That's because it is recreational in nature? And so it falls under that set of numbers that the DRA tells us we have to assign numbers to?
Okay, because we, we did not include that in our budget process, so. But with what they've spent out of the 48 that we have available, they have $500 left from their budgeted amount. So that 500 would be subtracted from the 48, leaving 4,300, which would...
I don't think the fair committee spent any money. Because of, my recollection is that the money that's in there, that says it's the fair committee, is the money for the fireworks. They haven't spent that yet.
Well, according to what Joanne sent me this evening...
It's poss, I have to take a look at it. It's possible that something was coded wrong?
Okay. Well, it does show Town Fair, $8,000 budgeted, range to date, $7,500, leaving $500. That's a balance in there. So again, I have no idea what that was, so.
But it doesn't affect what you're...
It doesn't affect what we're doing. Actually, I say if you, if you do look at our budget sheet, the numbers, we have basically $4,300 on that at this point in time. So theoretically, we do have enough money in there to cover the cost because our programs are all paid for. Music programs are all paid for.
Not this fiscal year?
Yeah, this fiscal year. The, well, actually, the music programs are paid for throughout the whole season. So they're paid for, the fishing derby's paid for, the Easter econ's paid for, the model rocket base paid for. So we have nothing else between now and July 1st.
John, do you have any questions on what he's...
Just on the, the size of the conduit, that was checked to make sure it's not wrong?
Yes, he said there's plenty of room in there to run the wiring necessary to do this. Could be such a piece of cake, so.
Couple of things. One says, cut, paint, and patch by others. What is that?
Yeah, I have no idea.
I think that's kind of standard on construction contracts. There is no cutting, painting, or patching. There's no drywall, so there's nothing to patch.
And why include it? But, okay. The other thing is, can you at least get one other quote for this? So at least have...
I can. Well, just, just to clarify things, the Recreation Commission has not voted yet to accept this, but I wanted to give you an idea of what I, where I was at this stage. So at our next meeting, hopefully, I'll have another quote. And then I can bring to the select board the, our recommendation.
And maybe the town administrator can work with you to find out exactly how much money you do have left because you have electricity charges between now and, so it's not tons, but...
Electricity charges and port of funds.
Port of funds. So...
Yeah, I think between now and July 1st, there's plenty, a couple of...
Okay.
Apparently, the number is already out there. All right. There are three other items that were not in here that I would like to bring up. And what I'd love to do is introduce Kami Knightley, who is going to talk about the survey that was done that she hopes are requested. So Kami, I'm going to take it. So Kami, I'm going to take it.
I honestly remember. And one of the first things I did in the fall was I conducted a survey, and I know Suckman Bucky was one of the ones who responded to me. Not sure if you remember that, but...
If you say so. I remember something, yes.
Yeah.
I think I'm listed on the bottom of the first page.
You are?
Yes.
So I know, when I posted the survey, I posted like a generic, I would like to, I have a two-question survey that I'd like to conduct if anybody's interested. The survey was simply, what events would you like to see hosted by the Recreation Commission? And how do you find out about events happening in the town? Because we realized, especially with Music in the Park, that we had, quite honestly, failed with advertising. There were a lot of lost opportunities there. And I wanted to make sure that we were making programs and making events available to all populations in the town of Lee, not just families, not just elderly, but everybody. So I'd say between eighty and ninety people participated in the survey, and I tallied up the like bigger items that wanted to be seen. So for the people who can't see this, there are things on here like canvas paint night, family game nights, and ice skating, and town camping at the park, play days, adult pickup sports was a big one, town picnic or potluck, races and fun runs, things like that. Bone builders was a big one. And then for advertising, Facebook, different signs, road signs, the town website. And then I compiled some of the most, I guess, striking comments from the different people that were surveyed, basically stating that they've adopted Durham or New Market as their rec departments, because ours was disappointing. And then I've been working away at all of these suggestions as time allows. So bone builders was a huge one. Unfortunately, after speaking with the director of that program, not only do we not have the community space to allow it, all of your requirements, it has to be air-conditioned, it has to be so big, it has to have storage space. We don't have anything that could accommodate that, nor is she starting any more classes. And not just that, you need three instructors, you need backup instructors and everything. So it was a very big undertaking. Bike Safety Day is another one. I've contacted the Bike Welcome Lines of New Hampshire. In order to be able to host a Bike Safety Day, you have to undergo like several trainings, and it's a hundred dollars a pop for training. So that's not really at the top. Unfortunately, the state police no longer offers their Bike Safety Program. They used to have a program where you could give the town or whoever was hosting it twenty free helmets. Unfortunately, that's no longer in their budget. Family Game Night was requested, and, oh gosh, we've had one so far. Unfortunately, the winter escaped me. There were a lot of known conflicts that night, a few people turned out, and it was a fun night. Hopefully, in the fall and the winter, we'll be able to make that a more regular program. We're hoping like twice a month kind of thing. We're working on Drone Day and Archery. I've reached out to a few different contacts for Archery. Unfortunately, none of them have worked out, whether it has to do with instructors, you're not having equipment, not being able to bring equipment, and so on. And then improvements for Music in the Park. This year, to date, we've raised twenty-four-hundred fifty-one dollars in sponsorships. We're planning to use this money to provide meals that will hopefully be selling for suggested donation that has not been determined yet, to help kind of recoup that. We'll also be using Boy Scouts, hopefully, the Fire Association. I've reached out to other town organizations. Our plan is to take whatever is made that night and split it evenly between whoever is cooking at us to recoup some of our money and to act as a fundraiser for whoever's helping us. We're also hoping to have pickup sports in the multipurpose field during Music in the Park, because that was probably the most requested thing. The issue in that is the rec commission owns zero equipment. So in order to have this done by a private citizen is proving to be difficult. Seminars and workshops. I've reached out to Seacoast Permaculture. Unfortunately, we weren't able to get anything together for this year. Town Potluck was incorporated with game night, and I am continuing to work on what I can. I'm hoping that next year's Music in the Park will be a fully sustaining thing, where we can pay for the entirety of it through just sponsorships. I'm hoping this year will be the proof that other businesses who have been hesitant to sponsor us, they'll see the improvements we've made and see that it's spanning, so that we won't have to use any of our operating budget for Music in the Park. We can just use that for getting other events off the ground. I think that's it.
The chief had a comment.
Do you want to contact me during the week? We can help you with the Bike Safety class.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, I think that this is all very good, because one of the things that people have said is in terms of the rec commission, and I know this stuff, tons of you, so do what you do, and you do it very well, but it's all geared to our smaller people, children and stuff, and they just love the fishing derby and the Easter, and all those things. But the community is more than just little kids. So, you know, older people have needs too. So, and that's why I think this is a good, you guys are working on this, this is excellent. Thank you very much for that.
Yeah, I really do appreciate it. And I was one of the ones that was pushing in the survey issue, but it looks like we did a lot more. It's quite interesting also that you talked about scheduling conflicts. That is always a problem. You try to send things in advance, six months or eight months, to try to find the time when something... So, thank you.
And just as a reminder, we did a couple of things for us older folks. As you may recall, we had the walking paths put in, and the track out back put in, so you know, we have done a couple of things. There's more.
There's more to come.
There's more to come. I have one more thing that we need to discuss. We have gotten sponsorships already, what, four, five, six sponsorships for the music? Seven?
Probably like eight.
Eight, okay. And part of that sponsorship is that we're going to have banners made, and we need to hang them, we need to hang them in the pavilion. So what we would like is permission to put up some small eye hooks in the beams, so that we can hang these banners in the pavilion on the nights of the shows.
Banking these sponsors, is that...
Yeah, it's just a sponsorship banner. It's just the, we're having, we're having some of the banners made, some of the businesses have their own banners, but they won't be pretty much, I don't know, we kind of figured a size. I talked to you about that earlier.
Yes, like four of them, I think, are going to be coming from the ones that were printed for the Lee Fair. So whatever size that is, is what we're trying to make comparable for all of them.
But we need a way to hang them in the pavilion, which is part of the sponsorship program. So we need, we need permission, because obviously, part of the rules are we can't put anything into the wood.
So hanging from the rafters?
We're thinking of hanging from the rafters, but if we put up eye hooks up there, then we have a place to tie them off to up there on the rafters. And I'm not talking about huge eye hooks, I'm talking about small eye hooks that would screw into the, into the wood.
I think it's good use of space. People are going to donate slash just... Yeah, thank you.
Well, we need a place to put these.
Absolutely, so...
I agree.
That sounds fine. Can I see one other question, Larry? And I know you probably recognize that, one of the things you brought to us is putting near the cement floor. Is that some still on your guys' radar?
Yeah, Steve Bullock and I have been talking about that. He's looking at some quotes for that, but it's going to be pretty hefty at this point. It should have been done back when the pavilion... But it wasn't, so we need to do it. We just have to find a way to do it.
So it's still on your radar, but...
It's on the radar, but right now, it's off to the side, because we're also looking at the issue of the tennis court. What do we do there?
Yes.
Do we tear the one up that we have now and just get rid of that and relocate it to Little River Park? Or do we redo it over here, you know? So that, that we're looking at too. Thank you, Larry.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr.
Item number eight, Peter Hoyt, Highway Department.
In front of you, you should have the bids for paving. I've got a piece of paper. I know the hope, hope it was GMI again this year. We've had them now these two years. Good luck to them. They've got a good group of men that come in and work with them, do a good job, so we can feel happy with their quality, can we say? So, thank you. Like I say, I don't know, we've had, what do you have, five bidders? You can see the prices in front of you. I know we compared a lot of the tonnages that the bidders gave us versus what we've done. Couple of these roads we've done on other occasions. And I know GMI and Continental were fairly close as far as the tonnages go. There were a couple that were either way over and way under at best. These are guesses, but at least it gives us a ballpark to work from.
Just a comment from the select for, so where it says total estimated cost, that's determined by the bidder themselves. In other words, they estimate the amount of tonnage for each one of the roads, so that's why you might see a variation. For example, where Brooks is showing a total estimated cost that's lower than GMI.
I think their total is...
But their price per tonne is higher.
Gotcha.
So Mr. Bullock would be the one to ultimately determine how much tonnage goes down. So we always base the bid on the price per tonne. And we base the award on the price per tonne.
One of the roads we're doing this year is Snell Road, and I know there's going to be a lot of shimming on that road. The road, a couple of spots is in kind of rough shape. So, you know, we're figuring on three or four hundred tonne of just shim on the, it's about a mile or so of that road. And then you've got your inch finish layer on top of that, so, you know, this has all been figured in, whether or not it'll come within. We may have to drop some of the roads that we've put on the list. I know if things get real tight, we will drop the transfer station and our own driveway. And there won't be too many more years where we'll be back to a dirt road going into the highway station, because that road's getting busted up.
Now, Peter, you said transfer station. You're just doing the road to the transfer station? So not the transfer station itself?
To my knowledge, it was strictly the road.
And I know lots of roads, but where is Angel Road?
Yeah, it was...
Where is that?
Angel is Five Corners.
Yeah.
It used to be Old Concord, if I'm not mistaken.
So it's that little road that goes up to those...
Goes out to the water, the Durham well, the Durham well.
I've been on it, but I didn't know it was called Angel Road.
Yeah, that's Angel.
Angel Road.
Yep, that's one of the ones that 911 renamed on us, and every time, we're all trying to find them.
Any questions?
Okay.
All right. I give with the GMI, but...
Yes, sir.
I authorized the highway supervisor to enter into agreement with GMI paving for the FY 2000 paving plan.
FY 20.
Two thousand, two thousand twenty.
FY 2020.
All right.
Two thousand would have been nineteen years ago.
Well, I'm just reading the thing here.
Second.
Second? Any discussion?
No discussion.
All this in favor?
Aye.
All right.
We're having a good day.
All right. Julie Glover, Town Administrator.
So on the smoking policy, or the no-smoking policy, the boards in agreement that you want to move forward, you need to schedule a public hearing for that.
Yes.
Are you going to accept the recommendation of the Recreation Commission and not have smoking areas at all?
I'm inclined to agree with him, or them. That causes, well, it's causing the problem that we have right now, because smoking there, all the butts all over the place, so yeah, you're kind of segmented to a smaller area, but it's still the particular problem. There's still secondhand smoke issues, so I'm inclined to say, no designated smoking area.
I'm in agreement.
So if you can tweak the policy to it like that.
Because I was thinking, where would you have a designated spot?
We may want to schedule the public hearing a little bit out, so that we can figure out some way to let the public know that this is coming, because this may be something that some people want to have input on at the public hearing. So I'm probably not going to schedule it for a couple of meetings.
Sure.
I mean, I know we want to get it in place, but we also want to make sure that the public's aware that we're looking at putting this in.
So to put it in the cryon, other places?
So hopefully, sometime for July first, though.
Yeah.
Just kind of...
Yep. And I don't know whether this is something that we actually want to contact the newspaper about.
Just let it passively...
It would, it would get people aware of it.
Right.
It'd be a passive announcement.
But many towns have said their facilities are non-smoking anyways. There's a...
Well, indoors, because there's a state law. But I don't, I actually know that there are some that have prohibited in outdoor areas, but I don't know whether that's the majority.
Maybe you could ask your group and see if anybody else has something like this?
Yeah.
Because you have access to all those other town administrators, see if they...
Okay.
Have experienced something similar, or if they've had significant public pushback in town.
Yeah, I know a couple of the state, the town cities in the western part of the state have done it recently, Swansea, in the Swansea area. Also, just letting you know, because Mr. Bullock could not be here tonight, that the Lee Highway Department is planning on bringing the Western Star, and I believe Mr. Hoyt is going to be attending the Fallen Public Works Employee Memorial dedication on June 5th. I believe it's in Concord. So we would have been participating in that.
Wow, and everything?
I thought Warren was going, to be honest with you, but whatever. Well, now you know.
Oh, really? I thought he told me, Pete. I thought he told me.
Said Warren didn't want to go.
Warren didn't work out this part of the conversation, then.
So is it like a parade, or like...
One of us will be going, yes.
I don't think, I don't think it's a parade. I think they're just going to have vehicles there representing the towns and then representatives from various towns and cities.
I'm sure you'll work it out of it.
But I mean, it is a statewide, yeah, statewide thing.
Thanks.
And that's all I know.
Item number ten, I move to accept the consent agenda as presented. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No discussion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Do you want to hold up on signing?
Yeah, let's sign it afterwards. Cellistu number eleven, I move to enter non-public session number RSA 91 hyphen A colon B. Room number two, A and C. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No discussion.
Okay. John McCource?
Yes.
Scott Lovebee, yes.
I move to seal the non-public session minutes. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No discussion.
John McCource?
Yay.
Scott Lovebee, yes. All right. How about if we go back to ten and do all of our seating?
Let's get that on the road. On the road, as they say.
Oh, you don't have to start with me.
Oh.
Mr. Slopeuk is not here.
Mr. Slopeuk is not there.
Did we miss this one last time? The rain has changed one?
Yeah, but there's some signatures on there.
That's a different one.
The different one?
Yeah.
But we signed it already.
No, no, that was, this, oh.
I thought we signed that one. Maybe you better cross-check that one.
Now you've got it up here.
I have no idea.
Well, you're the one making the sign.
Yeah.
But there's a cover sheet on it now, I don't know. What's the date on the signature?
Five, six.
Oh, yeah, maybe we missed that one.
But then this is an A five and that's an A five W.
That's right, Denise does, does up that one. Let's give her a break.
Well, let's give her a break because she also moved my mailbox, so I'm...
She did move it.
Yeah, I'm holding to her now, so...
Oh, there you go.
She went up a couple of notches in my book, so...
They've had the teachers turn it out for two weeks, so...
These checks, what do you, why am I getting them? Do I have to sign them someplace?
Oh, no, sorry. I had to do the whole stand, so I have to put a divider.
A lonely member of the audience.
I've been here this long. So these rates, I was going to ask this question. The rates that we're getting now, how much is the old percentage wise? Do you even know? Because it says what the rates are, but how much...
Just under five percent.
For all of them across the board? So is this just me?
Yes.
Get your checkbook ready, Mr. Tappin.
Ooh, yeah, look at these things. From the trust funds.
Yeah, two-hundred-and-eighty thousand. It's less than ours.
Say it all, look at all.
I was expecting just over three hundred. This last one is just me?
I think so. Which is it?
The Homeland Security grant?
Yes, those are usually just the chair.
All right. Item number thirteen, miscellaneous unfinished business? Anything? I was contacted by the VFW. So I will do the thing next Monday for the memorial day. They have a new commander, it's no longer Mr. Hardy, it's Mr. Cor... Sor... Corr, Andrew.
Where's it going to be?
Same place, same, everything's the same. So I'll do that, it's at one o'clock on next Monday, so...
Exciting.
I think I'm planning for nothing super.
But I did notice the sign was down there, the university building? I guess it went through?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, it sold.
Oh, the budget office?
Yeah.
Yeah, May, I think it just sold.
Yeah, but it took forever for the sign to go down. I noticed there was some surveyors out there who also...
Who was it?
It was...
I don't remember.
It was a person that deals with mental health issues and children and so forth.
It's actually ultimately political?
Yeah, that's what I think.
Didn't it have to do with horses too?
Oh, the therapeutic writing?
Yeah, I follow it.
That's a... No, that's part of it.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, they're supposed to animal and therapeutic writing, therapeutic animals. But it's a change for the children that come like after school. And I think it's also people that have learning disabilities more than physical disabilities at this point. So the sign, the sign went down, so kind of interesting. And then there's another building being added to the storage facilities there. Right across from urgent care, which is going to be a condition building. And that seems to be going through.
Anything with the, behind the Irving Station? Nothing that you've heard of?
Nothing, no. This is just basically preparing the land for what would be a, you know, ten-thousand-squid facility and restaurant and so forth.
So they brought no proposals to the...
No proposals, not at this time. And we haven't got a hot dog stand yet either.
Yeah, I noticed that, no hot dogs, geez. Pretty bad.
Did he just go away?
I don't know, I'd ask Karen what happened to him.
TCVC is meeting every week. We meet again this Wednesday. So we're working on our recommendation to the board. So we should have that probably for the...
June third.
Yes, that meeting, so... Yeah, that was a heavy sign. You put that in...
That was a heavy sign.
Mr. Buggbee did a heavy sign.
It was a heavy sign.
I didn't even let go without, and I forwarded the final invoice to you.
Yeah, we'll deal with that on Wednesday. It should be fine, we talked about it. So, you know, that will be done. But yeah, we're continuing to work. Mr. Tappin is doing lots of stuff for us, so... Thank you, thank you. I don't have anything else. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All votes in favor?
Aye.